To order, let the secretary roll call please.
Dr. DuPey.
President.
It's Hawthorne.
Here.
It's Howard.
Here.
Ms. Jordan.
Here.
Ms. McCray.
Here.
Mr. White.
I am here.
Mr. Mosby.
Here. Corn being established, we ask you to stand.
Pledge.
Dr. Vance, can you read us on our pledge?
Oh, do I need to go to the front?
You say right.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next agenda item, public comment. Public comments will be heard in accordance to policy two colon two three zero, public participation at a board of education meeting and petition to the board. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. If you have comments about matters involving students or personnel, please refrain from discussing disclosing names. No public comment?
I do.
I can say I do.
I have one.
She took the microphone off you.
With my sincere gratitude and appreciation, my family and I, my family and I want to thank everybody in this district for the love and support, for the love and support that you guys have shown us in the passing of my grandson. So I want to say I love you guys. You guys don't know how that felt, that the district had shown so much love and support to me and my family. I just, oh my God. It's just, I thank you guys, okay? I really do. I love you guys and thank you so much. The board, all the board members, I love you all. Dr. White, oh my God, thank you so much. I really do appreciate it. And this coming from my heart. So I just want to say thank you guys. Another thing. It was such a joy today, okay? So today was such a joy for the first day of our students coming back to school. I was so excited to see those happy faces coming back to school. They took pictures and they was happy seeing their friends and their favorite teachers. And I just said, I'm praying for everyone to have an amazing year. Thank you.
I have a public comment, Mr. President. First I want to say, Ms. Howard, we love you. We're in prayer with you in solitude and we stand with you, your family, to me personally. But I speak for the board that our hearts and our condolences is to you and your family, so. It's definitely always. Excellent job administration and staff for a wonderful first day, so clap it up for yourselves. You guys made it happen, made it work. And we're gonna have a great school year. And I continue to keep saying this and I'll say it again, this is the profession you chose. So when little Johnny and little Suzie is kind of getting on their nerves a little bit, remember you love children. So just rehearse that in the mirror. You love children, you love children. We had an excellent back-to-school bash, so hats off to all of you guys that made that happen and also the board. I want to say big kudos to Dr. White and our board president because they donated personally out of their pockets to do some of the things. I think this was one of the best back-to-school events that we've had in the years prior. I'm not that old, so I don't know what we had way, way back when. But I do know that we pulled it off and it was an excellent event for the community. I do wish that it would have, yeah, yeah, it was amazing. We had multiple bouncy houses. I think that if I'm not mistaken, the district paid for the book bags, correct? Dr. White? But everything else came from outside sources, correct? And so really, really big, all the members, you see, all of the prehaircuts, the food that we have. And big shout out to the Park Forest Youth Commission as well that partnered with us. Definitely excited about that. It just works sometimes, it gets more coverage, you know, in our media. But we're excited about what we did and my hats off to all of you guys. Thank you guys for making that happen.
Anyone else?
I have a comment. Uh, uh-oh. I'll take a cord out. There we go, there we go, I'll be like, oh, sorry. Okay, so three things. First of all, beginning a new school year, very exciting. I would like to congratulate all the schools for having such a successful first day of school. I know it wasn't easy getting it all together, but wow, 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 is all I can say. You know, it came together, children were happy after school. And it's just, you know, wonderful to hear from the administrators as well as from students that they had a great first day of school. So another round of applause for yourself, Dr. White, administrators, for bringing it together because I know it hasn't been easy, I know it hasn't. Second thing is, and this is actually a law that took place last year, but with all of the issues with, you know, making sure everybody was safe with COVID. I'm not sure if everybody was aware, but back in 2021, August, a law was passed in Illinois called Right to Play for students to have uninterrupted recess, meaning that it can't be taken away for behavioral issues or anything like that. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware, including the board, because this is something that, like I said, last year we were so busy with making sure we were opening safely. And so now that we're back, we're safe, we don't necessarily have to wear masks. You know, it's, you know, good to make sure that we're staying up to date on any legislation that was passed during the pandemic. And last one was kind of some complaints from parents. I did attend the back-to-school bash on a couple of, two Saturdays ago. And it was a huge, huge thing and it was good to see. But I did have a couple of complaints from parents, one of them being that it was hard to access the school resources. It seemed more of a political thing than a back-to-school thing. And while I do want to state that I do appreciate our politicians, Senator Joyce, Representative DeLuca, and with how much they come to our functions and support what we do. Some parents were feeling that it was a little bit too much and it took front, center stage as opposed to the back-to-school with the wonderful physicals and immunizations, signing up for, you know, after-school esteem, all those different things. But again, like I said, you know, that was, I do appreciate our politicians, our local politicians, coming out to support us. But the biggest complaint I received was that there was prayer that took place during that school function. And I just want to just pretty much say that, you know, bring these concerns forward because not all parents are able to make it today. But to bring it forward so that we as a board are aware that we do have a separation of church and state and to be mindful of when we are presenting a school function to make sure that we maintain that separation. That's all.
If I had, no, 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 not to that. I just want, I just want to say real quick, Mr. President. I promise I'm going to be very, very quick. I, I want to say, I just want to say our politicians, of what they do, I believe they're supposed to give back. And that's one of the things that I pride Senator Joyce and State Rep Anthony DeLuca for their continuing to give back and funding most of the things that were seen there. And so I'm so grateful and hopefully from this that they won't stop and cease to do what we've elected them to do, which is to legislate and to support our community events. And I'm so grateful as well for our community pastors that did come out, that wanted to voice their concern, not only just the natural and social needs of our community, but our spiritual needs as well and our psychological needs that we need as well. And so I am so proud of our partners and our community members that came out to support and to give back like they continue to do. That's it, Mr. President.
And could I just say, I just want, I wasn't able to stay through the entire thing, I had to leave. So, you know, a lot of what I'm hearing is from people who were there for the longer haul. I, there were some things that I wasn't, you know, aware of myself, but was brought to me as a school board member.
Thank you.
But I'm in agreement with you in thanking these politicians for their continued support of our school district.
Mr. President.
Oh, welcome back, everyone. Just some feedback from some parents about registration, the need for a notary perhaps and the registrar to be on site at registration could possibly be a little helpful when people.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Not bad.
Okay. My public comments. Just to address Dr. DuPey, there was actually a Supreme Court case just probably about two months ago where a high school football coach had assembled his players in middle of the field and had prayer. And the Supreme Court said that bottom line is that long as they're not forcing young people to pray, that they actually could pray at the school. So from this point on, that long as you're not forcing kids to pray where it's a practice, that bottom line, you can't have public prayer. Secondly, as you come into the entryway of 21st century, you see we are building a new entryway. That new entryway that we're building comes from a grant that Representative DeLuca basically walked through for this district to get in order to build an entryway. So they do just as much for us as we do for them. We know it's an election year and it seems, you know, kind of funny, but bottom line is that those are the kind of friends that we want to have. Friends who can actually make dollars trickle down to our district so we can do some of the things that we need to do. So I didn't see it really as a big political event because we just had our state, we had our current state rep and our current state senator. And so it's not like they were, you know, out there electioneering, they were just here to support District 163. And they also bought gifts that they gave away to their constituents as well. So after all that, I would like to say thank you to Dr. Kalita White and her entire administrative team for a phenomenal opening institute that had me in tears. And like I said, you know, those babies are able to do what they do because of what you do. And so I encourage you to keep doing what you're doing. Mr. White says, Mr. White said, keep the children first. I was one of those difficult students, so I know how, you know, some of us can give you a hard time. But bottom line, you know, when you really pour into them and you plant them a seed, you might not see them grow, but they grow. And so continue to do what you do, you know, let you know that we're here for you, okay? Bottom line, if you got something that's going on, you let Dr. White know and she'll bring it back to the board and we'll see what we can do. But if you don't let us know what's going on, we don't know what's, you know, we don't know what you're thinking. So if there's something that needs to be done, something you'd like to address, within reason, within reason, just, just address Dr. White and then she'll bring it to the board. So once again, like I said, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for attending tonight, each and every one of you for what you do for our students, our community, and continue to elevate excellence and remember, you're all of the VIPs.
Mr. Mosby, President Mosby, I was just thinking as you gave that information out that it was, maybe what we could do as a school district is better promote how our elected officials are helping us. Because I think a lot of parents probably saw the construction and don't realize, you know, everything that goes into it and how our politicians help us.
It was kind of, kind of interesting because I got an email and a phone call from someone from the Department of Commerce. I called Dr. White, I said, listen, I got a call from someone on my personal cell phone, on my personal email, what's going on? And so I forwarded information to her, she forwarded to David, and actually they had been in communication with his office and he had told them about the grant that was coming. And I think it was an update, it was in one of Dr. White's updates. Sometime we were reading stuff, yeah, sometime we were reading stuff, we kind of missed stuff because I just asked her, are all the schools starting in that 25th edition? Yeah, it was in the update, you know, so.
Well, what I mean is for the public, so that the public are aware of, you know, oh, this is funded, you know, our representative helped us to get the money and the funding for that. Because like I said, these are comments coming from the community. And what we learn as board, you know, is different than what they're hearing or what they would hear. So for us to, you know, emphasize when, you know, oh, Senator Joyce came out for the, like, with the FA, FFA thing. Or Representative DeLuca, he helped us get this so we can do this, you know, that sort of.
Remember that event, he invited us, invited our students down to his farm.
Yes, yes.
You know, and so they do a lot. And so I'll take the criticism over that one. I know that they support what we're doing here in Park Forest County, 163, and not just with lip service, but actually with actual giving and, you know, impact and services.
They, Senator Joyce just helped form an education bill that he was pushing that got passed. Even on that day, he gave out multiple bikes and gift cards and just, you name it. And so if the community didn't see the support, hopefully they know from this that they support heavy. And I'm grateful to have them. Some don't support, they don't give back, they don't come to our events, you know, they just kind of stay in the shadows. So I'm grateful that they do support and, like, we have Mr. Fritz that just walked in the room, that we're glad to support him as well, too. They do support and just like this here, I invited him to come out to speak to our constituents about our taxes, our property taxes. And so this is what we want. We want our local elected officials to come and be involved in a part of what we're doing here to let the community know that we care. And so that's not a knock. And again, like Mr. President Mosby stated, that if that's something that a community member or someone that has a negative commentation towards, I'm okay with that.
I just think it would be good for us to share it with the community because that will transload on their view of things.
Yeah, but you're sixty, man, public comments.
President Mosby.
He just talked to White.
There are no additional. I would like to just inform the public in response to Dr. DuPey's mention, the updated legislation for the August 2021 period of time, that we have all followed that legislation. We have implemented recess grades, came through five uninterrupted, 30 minutes at every school. Mrs. Phelps and I have had many conversations regarding the recess legislation because it was something new for four, five, to have 30 minutes of uninterrupted recess. So, Dr. DuPey, we do follow all of the legislation. We have updates that we review monthly regarding any changes that are required in our practices.
Thank you. I just didn't know if everybody was aware of it because of how busy we were with the opening last year.
I was, I was aware of it because I probably spent like four years interrupted recess. So, okay. All right. Go for the public comments. Okay, superintendent's report.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Education, staff, administrative team, invited guests, community members. This evening's superintendent's report will begin with item F. We have an invited guest this evening to share with us and have dialogue regarding the important aspects of our community. Mr. Ricker will invite our guests to speak. And please introduce who we have with us in the audience.
Hi, we have the Cook County Assessor, Mr. Fritz Cady, here to give an overview on property taxes. How does the cycle work? How is your property tax still alive at? And certainly open to any questions and answers afterwards. We have presentation here. I would like to follow up here for you.
Okay, great.
And with him is Mr. Kelwyn Harris, Director of Outreach.
Yes, Director of Outreach.
Oh, it says it right there.
Do we have, do we have a virtual audience as well or is everyone? Okay, great. Don't start it. Sure, sure. Well, hey, thank you, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to have me here as your servant, your Cook County Assessor. And my wife's a teacher, so I'm proud to be here with you and I know how important the work is, how important the work that you do is. And I know how hard it is. If you think this job as assessor is hard, try being a trustee or a school administrator or a teacher or parent in the middle of this pandemic. So I just want, I'm here to tell you, to give you a little bit of a sense of how assessments fit into our larger property tax system. Also give you a little bit of knowledge, I hope you can leave with on how our property tax system works. And then how we can collaborate with, how we're trying to make things better for taxpayers here in Park Forest and communities nearby. And then how we can work together in the future to get even better. Hey, Fritz, I'm guessing they probably can't see in this direction. Oh, okay, sure, okay, there we go. Okay, great, okay. I was not a feature.
You can tell your wife, did you already?
So I'm working on it. So real briefly, what do we do at the assessor's office? We estimate the value of nearly 2 million properties in Cook County. Homes, commercial properties, manufacturing properties. And our team estimates the market value of them and then the county has rules about how market values are converted to assessed values. We also administer exemptions which give homeowners a chance to take a little bit of value off of the top of the value of their, of the assessed value of their home to give them some property tax savings. The way to think about how we fit into the system is basically the taxing bodies like you, school boards are the most important taxing bodies in every community in Cook County. They're kind of determining the dinner tab, how everyone in the community is spending resources on schools, on libraries, on parks, on the city. And that dinner tab is set every year. Why do we do assessments? Assessments are how we divide up that tab amongst all the different property owners in the community. And our job at the assessor's office is to make sure that the value that we have estimated for each property is fair so that each person's share of that bill is fair. You know, I've ordered my share of steaks at dinner while others might have only had a side salad. It's only fair that I pay more of the dinner tab than the person who ordered the side salad. That's basically what assessments are there for, too. So assessments don't help us to raise more money. Assessments don't change how much money has to be paid at the end of the evening on that dinner tab. That's determined by the people in this community who've elected you. The schools are about two-thirds of property taxes and I think it's a little bit more here in Park Forest because we love our schools and we want to educate our children, invest in our children and our communities. So we could go to the next slide here, which I do. We reassess one-third of the county every year. So that means right now we're assessing the north suburbs. That means we have a team of analysts at our office estimating the value of homes and commercial properties in the north suburbs. We will come to the south suburbs next year. We last reassessed this community in 2020, in the middle of the pandemic. And we'll be circling back to see how things have changed since that pandemic year. And when we do, when we have a reassessment, we send out a notice to each property owner. They get a chance to say, hey, you got this wrong because everyone knows more about their property than we do. You can count on that. And if we got it wrong, they let us know and everyone has a right to let us know that, hey, you didn't get the footage of my home right. You're not treating me fairly versus our neighbors. And that's why we have the appeals process. You get 30 days to do that. Every community has individual issues. And I know here in Park Forest, we have a lot of issues that I know all of you face. Not only are rates some of the highest here in Park Forest in all of Cook County, but you also have special issues having to do with how are we valuing co-ops? How are we valuing commercial properties? Every one of those decisions influences everyone else's bill, so they're all connected because we're dividing up that bill together. So just a little bit more knowledge, just a reminder. We kind of, the way our property tax system works is you have the taxing bodies, school boards, libraries, municipalities. They determine how much money has to be raised, that's the dinner bill over on the left. Over on the right is the work that we do at the assessor's office estimating the value of everyone's property and administering exemptions. Once we estimate values, you have a Cook County ordinance, homeowner's values. Assessed value is 10% of the market value of your home. So if you have a $100,000 home, the assessed value should be $10,000, okay? But if you have a commercial property, it's converted at 25%, so a $100,000 commercial property has an assessed value of $25,000. If, once people have appealed at our office, they get to appeal to another body called the board of review, which they, basically it gives everyone a second chance to be heard, but that also changes the property tax base. So that's that percentage of the bill. We've determined a percentage of the bill, but then they can make revisions to it by making reductions on some people's share. That means everyone else pays a little bit more, okay? And they're a separately elected body. The Illinois Department of Revenue determines something called equalizer, which we don't need to talk about here because it doesn't affect how much money is raised in your community, it can affect your share of the bill a little bit. We combine the tax base, the estimated values, with how much money has to be raised and that determines rates. Why are rates so high in Park Forest? I know you must get a lot of this question a lot. The reason why is there, the value of homes is pretty low in Park Forest overall and there's not much of a commercial base. We have lost commercial properties in this community. So that means all the costs of educating our children, taking care of our libraries and parks and providing municipal services are borne on the narrow shoulders of properties that are valued pretty low. That's why rates are high. Now, a deeper question, which I know you might have talked about, is our state does less to support school districts like this one than any other state in the Union. In most states, the school budget will be about 50% covered by the state. Here in Illinois, only about 25%. I don't know it is, what it is in the case of your district, but it's dead last in America in Illinois, which is why we have to raise so much money for our schools to begin with, for property tax. And then your property tax bill gets sent out when you take the rate and apply it to each person's assessed value. So I don't want to get, so this is what we call property tax 101. Remember, there's a levy, that's the dinner bill, and then the base, that's the sum of everyone's assessed value. And here's what happens if things, if we don't estimate values correctly. So we're estimating the values of homes and commercial buildings, if you see on the top. If we're getting it right in this community, if we're looking at market values, half of the, half of the tax base is residential, half is commercial, okay? And if that's the case, then we're splitting the bill between residential homeowners and property owners 50/50. If everyone's assessed value goes up by 50%, you still are keeping 50% of the bill, right? Because we're splitting our dinner bill. The dinner bill is fixed, if everyone's assessed value goes up, but everyone's value goes up by the same, everyone's share doesn't change. So if your house was worth $100 and it went up to $200, but everyone else, everyone else's value also went up to $200, your share of the bill does not change. So that's what you see in the second column here. So we're all interconnected. But if just one property doubles in value and everyone else stays the same, that person is paying more of a share of the bill, 66% in this case, and everyone else is paying less. So that's why we're interconnected. That's why even if you don't own a commercial property, you need to care about how commercial properties are valued because a change in their value affects your share of the bill. So let's talk a little bit about what happened in Park Forest when we reassessed it in 2020. So this blue line is the total residential value in your community and the yellow line is the total value of commercial property in your community. Now there are three different dots there. The starting point is over on the left, when we started reassessing it in 2020 where we started. The middle point is where we assess value in Park Forest. And then the last point is where the board of review changed the values. Okay, remember the board of review is. Okay, remember, the board review is another Cook County body that takes appeals. So I'll show you on the chart here. The total assessed value in Park Forest, in, oh, sorry, this is Blum and Ridge Township. In Blum and Ridge Township was 700 million. It was cut to 690 million by our office, so it fell slightly. And then it was pretty much unchanged at the board review at 685. But we saw that commercial properties were undervalued, so we raised them from 303 million to 460. But the board review cut it on appeals to 347 million. So that basically meant that homeowners were taking more of the burden after our, after appeals were done from following our office. So let's, what does that mean in terms of share of the bill? Share of the pie? Homeowners started with 70% of the pie and commercial had 30%. After our reassessment, homeowners' share fell 10% to 60%. Commercial rose to 40%. After appeals from the board review, a little bit more burden was put back on the homeowners, 66%. Homeowners had 66% at the end of the cycle in 2020. So at the end, homeowners had a little bit less share of that bill at the end of 2020. And that, that's why bills in a lot of Ridge Township went down in last year. But here in Park Forest, let's take a little bit more closer look. In Park Forest, homeowners had 81% of the bill here and 19% before the reassessment. After the reassessment, homeowners had a much lower share of the burden, 68%. Commercial had 32. But board review made some pretty big cuts to commercial, so homeowners' share went up to 78%. So homeowners' share went down a little bit, three percentage points, but not as much as it could have. Now, what happened there? There's Walmart. So Walmart's the biggest commercial property in your community. It started with a value of 4.5 million. We raised it to 4.9, but the board review cut it to 4.4. That alone added about a percentage point to people's tax bills, the average homeowner's tax bill, in Park Forest. Now, you can have different opinions about the value of properties like Walmart. In our opinion, Walmart was doing better during the pandemic than before, but the board review didn't agree. Now, what can we do together to make this better? First of all, what we're trying to do is, you can see those charts, is making sure that commercial properties are paying their fair share, that we're estimating the value better than our predecessors did. We try to use good evidence. And that has helped homeowners in a lot of, in a lot of communities all over the south suburbs, and it did here too. But we think homeowners could have been keeping more. And this is important for you in supporting the schools here. You are doing really good work in supporting education of your children, but you know there's only so much pain that people can take in paying that property tax bill. So this is why we want to make sure that big properties like Walmart are valued correctly. And what you can do with us is partner with us, when appeals are made at the board review, as a school board, you can do something called intervention. When Walmart is appealing its value and saying, we think we're worth 4.3 rather than 4.9, you can come in with us with the evidence that we have and say, no, we think this property's worth 4.9. Here's the evidence. And we're sticking up for homeowners in our community to make sure that they're not picking up the tab for Walmart when they get this reduction, if you listen to them. So that's something that we can do together as a school board and the assessor's office. And that's why I just wanted to give you a little bit of knowledge about how we're all interconnected. None of you own Walmart, but the appeals that Walmart does affect you as members of the community. And we're trying to make this work better and we can work better with you to try to make sure that everyone's paying their fair share in the community and homeowners aren't picking up the burden for Walmart. Okay, that's it. I have questions, I can take questions or we can discuss.
So when do we show up, right?
So Kelwyn Harris, our Director of Outreach, is here as a resource for you so that we can cooperate. There are all sorts of peers that you have around the county that collaborate. So school boards aren't on their own. School boards work together with other taxing bodies in a lot of other communities to share the cost of intervening. And you can work with Kelwyn to say, hey, let's get together when this reassessment happens next year, let's find the biggest properties. And if we see appeals, let's make sure we're intervening together. So Kelwyn is your resource at our office. And I'm here for you too, I'm your assessor.
I want to add something. First, I want to say thank you for coming out. I truly appreciate you doing this and the work that you're doing to help us here in Park Forest. But I want to add some arms and legs to some of you said. You said that Park Forest is one of the highest taxing entities in Cook County.
Highest rates.
Rates in Cook County. And, and with that said, Cook County is one of the highest in Illinois.
Yes.
And with that said, Illinois is one of the highest in the nation.
Yes.
So ultimately, Park Forest is one of the highest in the nation.
Yes.
And so again, we thank you for the work that you're doing and we want to partner. We want to partner with you. We want to do whatever we can do as a taxing body that can help our community. So appreciate what you're doing. Thank you for coming today and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, trustee. Really appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
I do have some questions. We concerned because of our Walmart. But we're in our area, 163. We don't have, Walmart isn't part of our area, if that makes sense. I'm assuming that you're in.
Yes, it is.
It's property check.
No, 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 no. Let me finish. Thank you. So, I mean, we do have them in Olympia Fields, Richland Park. And so I guess as a whole, as part of Ridge Township, that's one thing. But we are not, when our tax bills go out for District 163, they're not going out to Walmart. They're going out to the area, our general area, if you could say, that, that covers our district.
Okay.
So.
So what you can do is, is go to our website and there is a, you can, if you go to data, there's a pull-down menu, data. And then from the data menu, there's something called data dashboards. And then there's a municipality button. And you can look in every single municipality in Cook County and see which are the biggest parcels and see which ones had the biggest reductions. Now, my team prepared this for me and I thought we checked to see if Walmart was here. I could be wrong. I know there's a Walmart country called Hills, but I thought there was one here too. Maybe I'm wrong.
It's in Olympia Fields.
It's in Richland.
And then Richland Park.
Okay.
And so that does pan to with our high school district, 227.
Uh huh, okay.
But not for us, 163. We are just bound by the section of Chicago, my experience in Park Forest.
Okay. Well, so what you can do is you can look on the website to see which parcels were the biggest ones and the same logic would apply there. So whatever the biggest parcels were that had the biggest reductions or biggest appeals, those are the ones where you might want to intervene on. Because the principle's the same. There were some big reductions in commercial there in Park Forest and we should try to figure out which ones there were.
Walmart's one. We pay into 227 as well. 227's part of Park Forest. So Walmart does.
I'm just talking specifically.
No, but Walmart does, it does.
It doesn't go by village.
Nope.
It goes by township.
Township, township, which both feed into Park Forest. And 227 is one of them that we pay into too.
Well, I can stand corrected, but the principle's the same.
Yeah.
We want to look at, as a school board, whichever of the biggest parcels are in your community that are appealing. And then you can work with us so that we come in together with the best evidence to protect your base so that your homeowners don't pick up the tab with that. That's the, that's the point I was trying to convey.
And the second piece of it is Park Forest is pretty unique. We have co-ops.
Yes.
Cooperatives. I love the cooperatives. I used to live there.
Yes.
And then I became, I bought a home here and became a homeowner. And I experienced the pain of my neighbors when I went from tax bill of 400, $500 for a bedroom to thousands for a house. And so my question is, how can we even things out of it? When it comes to the housing cooperatives? Because I know each of them, they pay a different amount.
Yep.
You know, so, you know, one might pay a whole lot more than the one next door. Is there a way that we can even it out? Because basically they're, the properties are almost identical.
Yeah. Great question. So, so our job is to estimate the value in the market for all these properties. And what has happened, for whatever reason, and I don't quite understand why, the value of the co-ops, like a share in the co-op, they, the value trades so low that a lot of them, the assessed, the, the, at market value is below the value of the homeowner's exemption. And so a lot of them fall off the tax rolls. So there are a lot of co-ops who are not paying any property taxes.
I know of that.
Yeah. And so what, and you know, our data showed that we thought we'd estimated the value of the co-ops accurately in the way they trade in the market, but your village, and we appreciate, has come to us saying, hey, could you take another look to see how you do this? So that we're not leaving anything on the table. It doesn't seem right that there are a lot of people aren't paying any property taxes when everyone else has to carry the burden. So we're looking at it, but we do have to follow the data on what the value of the co-ops is in the market. That's the thing we have to do under the law. Now, the law is written, it creates an exemption where any home that's under, you know, 80, like 100 or 80 or $90,000, somewhere around there, usually ends up not paying any property taxes. And so a lot of those values have been around there. We'll take another look at it, but we know it's a problem. We know it's, it's an issue of fairness that there are a lot of homes that seem to have values below that threshold. So we'll look, we'll, we'll take a look several times at the data, make sure that they're valued fairly.
Because when you think about it, if one of the, one of them were burned down and they had to rebuild it, it would cost a lot more than the $20,000.
Yes. Well, in your village, aren't you says the replacement value of these is a lot greater than what they're trading for? Which is, which is true. On the other hand, the law says that we have to look at the value in the market for them. So that's the thing that we're concerned about.
Thank you for taking the time to explain all of this.
Happy to do it. These are great questions and we, we know every community has very questions or relevance in it. So.
Question, you said, the co-ops that are being taxed the same. You say, let's come out with evidence to show they need to be reevaluated. What type of evidence will we come with?
Well, so like the evidence that we look at is what have homes sold for in the market? And the evidence that we have when we assessed it in 2020 was that shares in these co-ops, which are the, the raw material that we have to look at, were showing that they were trading below this level where, below the exemption level, basically. So if someone had a homeowner's exemption, it was zeroing out their tax. We're taking another look at it to see where the market is now, to make sure that we're getting it right. We want to make sure that we're not underestimating the value of them. We want to make sure it's representative of what similar homes might sell for in the community. And we just don't want to leave any stone unturned on getting it right. But we are constrained, like if shares in those co-ops sell for $50,000, we can't go and say they're worth 100.
Correct. And can I just add, the co-ops is one of the jewels of the Southland.
Yes.
My mother actually lives in one as well. And so I'm grateful that you follow the letter of the law.
Yes, we do. And, and we know, you know, there may probably, many other folks in your shoes here too. So we follow the law. We just want to make sure we're doing it with all the data that's there, to make sure that everyone's treated fairly.
So, and also with the co-ops, it's a strange way not to get into the history of how it was set up. I think you know a little bit about the history. But as the soldiers came home and moved in, it was affordable for them there. And I know we probably have to reassess that. But again, that's one of the places that a lot of our elderly live. And so I'm grateful for it not being, you know, where they can't afford that. So again, appreciate you guys following the letter of the law with that.
Yeah, absolutely. And we, we follow the data, but we also make sure that we're listing to everyone in your community with broad attention.
I, I think one of the major issues is too, that I think it's more of a municipality issue is the lack of businesses here to sustain some of that. And so I think that's a major focus that we have to focus in on as well.
Yes. And so regardless of what we're, how, how we come down on the co-ops, we want to make sure that we're valuing all the other properties correctly.
Correct.
Underestimating their value. Because if we do, then everyone else, everyone else ends up taking up the tab for that.
Correct.
So that's why we can work with you to make sure we all bring our best data. We take it to the board review if they're appealing it there.
Correct.
So that the basis is, is big as it could be.
And we don't want to put our seniors out, so we want to make sure.
Well, it's all businesses and everyone else. You want to build your commercial base here, right?
Correct.
So we don't want the biggest property owners to skate by so the little guys have to pick up the tab for them.
Correct. Yes. Thank you again.
Okay.
And just one more thing. Have you gone to a village of high school board meetings and discussed this with them? Their, their board meetings are streamed, so that would get out to more residents in the area.
I've not been, I've not been to a board meeting, but I feel like I might have had a board meeting in my office.
You did. You have one.
Because we have very diligent members of your community who could come to us. We never turn down a meeting. And so we have seen a lot of the cases. I mean, we just had another meeting with our evaluation team in the village yesterday, or not yesterday, last week, so.
I think this would be a good way for more people to see what's going on because if they can't make it to that board meeting, it's online streamed so they can go and say, oh, this is what the assessor said, this is what's going on.
Okay.
Because every time, there's high school levy, we're the bad guys.
Right. Well, that's a great idea. Believe me, we, we all share the blame. People get unhappy and we know what it's like to feel like lightning rods for something that seems really unfair. Our property tax system is, I'm not going to come out and say that it is fair. The way those bills are determined, it's kind of an outgrowth of the state policy on funding education. And you are just trying to fund the education of your children and we're just trying to estimate the value of houses so we split up that bill fairly. But yeah, but it's understandable when people aren't happy.
Well, I want to give you credit where credit is due. You did do one with the Village of Park Forest.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Well, there we go. All right. Well, always happy to come back and we're always at your disposal. So Kelwyn Harris, he's our Director of Outreach. He's at kelwyn.harris@coochamile.gov. And we're, we're here to serve you. We want to make sure the system works best as I can for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Assessor Katie, for coming out. And Mr. Harris, we appreciate you for providing this informative presentation for our Board of Education in our community. Thank you so much. And thank you, our Board Vice President, Mr. White, for inviting the assessor's office representatives to come out and visit.
You don't trip over the top.
Absolutely, appreciate it.
Thank you, and I truly appreciate it.
Please reach out.
You know anything about the checks the governor was talking about?
Mr. Katie, do you know anything about those rebate checks the governor was talking about?
I think you can count on the fact that they're going to be out before the election.
We thank you guys for your diligence doing that presentation. Dr. White?
Our superintendent's report continues. We will begin back at item A, our district goals. Mr. Tredwell, if you would please show our proposed district goals. At the July 2022 Board of Education meeting, I presented the proposed goals to the Board of Education. And the feedback for us was to take another look at our goals to make sure we had language included that specifically addresses teacher retention. So for goal three, scroll there, thank you. Develop teaching capacity and implement teacher retention engagement activities through our mentoring, coaching. through our mentoring, coaching, and leadership development programs in order to ensure that the education of every child is met. We inherently engage in those activities, but the explicit language has been added, teacher retention engagement. So all other wording and language in our district goals remains the same. The goals are presented to the board this evening for the action item. Are there any questions regarding our district goals?
Then number three, the retention, is that, do we have like a, a timeframe, like from one to three years? And then, you know, things like that with the teachers?
Ms. Jordan, we consistently engage in teacher retention activities. I can provide the Board of Education a report of our teacher retention data so that we can see over time what those activities impact are as we work with teachers and coach them and mentor. But we have our new teacher network that's already in process. We have our principals mentoring teachers. We have individual mentors assigned to teachers. And we work towards enhancing our climate and culture so that teachers are happy here and want to be here and want to return. So we can certainly provide data on an annual basis so that you can see their teacher retention status. But we did take your words to heart, and even with our opening institute day, we wanted to honor all of our staff and let them know they were appreciated for choosing to be a VIP in District 163. We honored our staff with gift cards just to thank them for being here that hopefully they can use to purchase items for their classroom or for themselves in their educational practice. We engaged in activities that provided them experiences in SCL and climate and culture, special lunches. The principals did some fun things that I'll share this evening as well. So we are consistently working on teacher retention. I, I will have Dr. Patterson present our retention data so that the board can see the specifics through the years. As with all school districts across the nation, teacher retention is a challenge at this time. So we are diligent in our efforts. However, it is a nationwide crisis, but we are working to be the best that we can be. Are there any additional questions?
I don't want to prolong everything. Have multiple things. He said, I'm prolonging everything. I just want to say, great job to working towards that and you're 100% correct. Um, it's, it's a situation that's across the nation and so it's not just a 163 isolated event. So again, thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan, Dr. DuPuy, and Mr. White for your feedback and your insight into our work as we implement the vision of the Board of Education. Item B on the superintendent's report, our student enrollment report. Share that. Thank you, Mr. Tredwell. Today is opening day. I applaud our school leaders, our district office leadership team for engaging in activities that brought our students to school. Here is a first day, opening day enrollment report. Our registration teams have been hard at work. We can see that there is some recovery from the COVID pandemic. We have students that are coming back to school and our numbers are looking better this year. From August of 2021 compared to August 2022, we are up quite a bit. We can see the various grade levels and the total enrollment at last August was 1,031 students. We are currently at 1,494 students as of today. And registration is continuing and ongoing to get every child back in the classroom in District 163. Our next slide shows historical picture. Mr. Ricker does an effective job of tracking through the years so that we can see our August 31st enrollments through the years, 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021. Our August 31st was 1, 1331 at the end of August. We have already surpassed that. As of today, we're at 1494 versus the last day of August last year, we were at 1331. If we look through the years, we can see our average annual enrollment from 2018, 19 to 2021, 22. And we can see the decline during the COVID years of 2020, 2021, 2022, where we lost students and we're hoping that we have recovered all of those students and they're coming back. And we can see our highest enrollment months through the past four years. That we can see the enrollment numbers there for those years past. And Mr. Ricker, thank you for sharing this data today and as we've talked about enrollment through the years and working to also not only have teacher retention activities, but student retention activities so our families feel excited and welcome and want to be here and feel that it's a safe and healthy environment for their children. Are there any questions regarding our opening day enrollment and our historical enrollment?
I don't have a question. Just a statement that I am so happy to see the numbers are higher. Gave us an update and that was pretty frightening to see the enrollment as well as it was. But I'm so happy that we need enrollment and registration. You guys pushed it and, and made sure everyone was properly enrolled. And I'm, I'm just happy that the enrollment is up and continuing to go up. Because to me, that shows not only that, you know, students have to go to school, but the parents are also having trust in our ability to keep their kids safe during the pandemic.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. DuPuy. Mr. Tredwell, if you can go back to the previous slide. We can see that enrollment has increased, which also means we need a few more teachers. So we're working on that. Needing a few more teachers and really wanting to be able to effectively serve every student that is enrolled. If you look at our kindergarten numbers compared to last year, we are climbing. And we are working to ensure that we have staff in the classroom to service those students.
I, I got a question. I don't know if you have the numbers before you. How many did we get enrolled during that back to school?
I don't know, but Dr. Patterson might know. You were in the registration space.
Right. I'd have to go back and check that.
Thank you.
We did have quite a few people visiting the gym registering students on that day.
We were very busy.
Yes. Very busy. So also, as we think about student enrollment, I'd like for Mr. Wiley to share a little bit about our opening day by showing, or does Mr. Tredwell have it over here? Showing some visuals of what first day looks like today. All of our school principals, I applaud you on your engagement activities, connecting with families, taking pictures, making sure environments are fun spaces. We had a backpack donation today on the first day of school at Barack Obama School. We had teachers in the classroom on target and sharing with students. Students prepared and ready to work and ready to learn. We could just keep moving through those, Mr. White. We had a brand new first day teacher here. This is Ms. G. She's at 21st Century. And as I was helping at 21st Century, it's her first teaching assignment. And I met her at the door and she said, I forgot the nervous jitters today. And I said, it's going to be okay. And she walked into her classroom and all of her students gave her a hug. It was a great time. We see our eighth graders here in the hallway playing a game, having some fun. I'm not sure exactly what they were doing, Mr. Lee or Dr. Banks. They're out there. They're not pitching pennies. We're not pitching pennies.
I'm repaying them. I'm repaying them. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Dr. Banks, what were, what were the students doing?
Team building science activity.
Team building. Kudos to the science teachers for getting our students out. We had teachers sharing about my family and students coming up to share, welcoming activities on our tables, welcoming our students, environments that are fun and engaging to catch the attention of students. We had students looking at books to see the amazing selections in the classroom. And we had smiling faces as we greeted students outdoors. Keep going, Mr. Tredwell. Thank you. We had teachers happy and smiling, connecting with parents and, and students. We have students with their third grade, here I come t-shirts, straight in the second grade t-shirts, excited and ready to be here, smiling as they're entering the buildings. It was really a fun morning. I wasn't able to go to every school. We have balloon decorations and decor as well, as well as the outdoor signs. We have Mr. Lee with students outside.
It's a close up.
Close up. So thank you to our staff, to our school leaders, to our classroom teachers, to everyone who supported opening day and those enrollment numbers. People are coming, they want to be here. We are excellence in the Southland and we're doing an amazing job of demonstrating. And here we go. Michelle Obama School. Our Michelle Obama leaders are starting off with fun. And their staff members. Creating a climate of fun, joy, and acceptance. I think there's one more. Yes. We have our staff having fun, just really excited to reconnect. This was on our institute day at Michelle Obama School when the principals led their meeting. So the principals are making every effort to bring joy back to School District 163 as we return.
We are at door one of the Barack Obama School of Leadership and STEM. Scholars, wave to everyone. Parents, wave. We're excited. We're starting the 2022. For those fourth graders up in the south, I'm your principal. The fifth graders, welcome back. We're excited. We're about to let everyone in, but I just wanted to go live really quick so that everyone can see how great everyone looks and how excited we are to have everyone here.
Thank you, leaders, for all that you do. Thank you, teachers in the classroom for making today fun. Thank your science teachers for that engaging activity to have students out in the hallway showing their leadership skills and trusting that they have the ability to engage with each other in ways that are innovative and not traditional. So thank you for all that you do. Our student enrollment is awesome. Our staff is awesome and our leaders are awesome. Thank you for all of your work. Item C on the superintendent's report, we have Dr. Johnson, who will give us an update on our e-learning information.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Johnson, Director of Instructional Services and Grants. I would like to provide an update regarding our e-learning plan. So January 27th, 2020, 2020, the board approved our very first e-learning plan. And so I'd like to think that we have always been ahead of the game because that was before the pandemic. And so three years later, we need to renew our e-learning plan. And so next board meeting, we will offer public input for the renewal of our e-learning plan. But in the meantime, we will pull together our e-learning committee just to review the plan, make any adjustments, or talk about any adjustments needed. And that meeting is September 14th, so I do have invites if anyone would like to.
Thank you.
Join us. You can be here at 21st Century. We will, um, we will invite our board, um, or our PTO boards at different schools. We will have teacher representation, union representation, parent representation, and hopefully board representation if you are so inclined to attend. Also, in the meantime, we will survey our families within the next few weeks just to see what their internet access is in the event we do have to enact an e-learning day. And so that information will be included on our e-learning renewal plan. So please join us if you are so inclined.
Speaking of, I'd like the members of the education community to be here, if you would. Yes. We'll be there.
Yeah, I'll be cool. If you have a chair, you know who that's. I hope you know. You have a chair. I'm on his way.
Do you want, you would like for me to make an objection or you might be?
Well, I would like for you to be here. Thank you for that call with action. Okay. Did everybody get an invite? I feel like I was one short. Okay. Because I can't get more. Okay. Okay, well.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Item D on the superintendent's report. Last month, the Board of Education charged me with connecting with our families to determine their interests and changing our graduation date. I shared with the Board of Education that one of my goals that the board has charged me with is to engage with families, to enhance communication, and to ensure that our climate and culture supports the needs of our community. We began, as, as we left, to survey our eighth grade families. Can you scroll? We had, we had 102 responses regarding a new graduation date. And these are the responses. 67.6% suggested that we move our graduation to Sunday, May 21st at 4:00 p.m. 12.7% Thursday, May 25th at 4:00 p.m. And 19.6%. At 7:00 p.m., which is our original plan and date. So I am bringing this information to the Board of Education based on their recommendation to shift towards the date that our community suggests. To that end, we will move our graduation to Sunday, May 21st at 4:00 p.m. for Michelle Obama eighth grade students.
I just have one question because that's, you know, a couple of days earlier than before. That doesn't affect us with the student attendance requirement, or anything for eighth grade?
No, just.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm just saying they go the week, they go to school that whole week and I know they're practicing and all, but, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't like, oh, well, you're a couple of days short. You're trouble school district.
I thought they, that's what I was saying. They can have a week to take on.
A few days.
Oh, okay. Well, as a first time eighth grade parent, I was not aware.
I watched them last year. And I found it last year, last year.
Are there any additional comments or questions regarding the graduation? Dr. Banks and Mr. Lee and Dr. Holloman. Oh, I failed to introduce Dr. Holloman. I would like to say to the Board of Education, we have Dr. Holloman. Please ensure that as you plan your eighth grade parent meeting, that this communication is clear regarding the date and time for our eighth grade graduation. Item E on the superintendent's report. Dr. Naki. Last month at the July meeting, we shared with the board our plan for health mitigations. And the board took a look at the information we shared and approved our plan. This month, we are coming to you to share updates because the guidance is ever-changing. And the CDC has provided updates for us, and so we are passing them on to the board. The board took action that we would follow the CDC ISBE and IDPH guidance. So Dr. Naki has a few updates for you this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, it changed again, so I'm just going to try to keep the dates on there so we can all keep up. So as of last week, we have, the CDC and ISBE have now removed quarantine recommendations for close contacts. They just suggest that people who have been exposed should wear a mask. They no longer expect, there's no more screening surveillance testing in schools. They would like us to focus testing on high-risk activities during the high COVID level community. Currently, we're at green, so high level is when we're at red. Currently, we're at green, so high level is when we're at red. High-risk activities were things like they said, sports, close contact sports, those types of things. It removes the recommendations for separating students into cohorts, takes out social distancing guidelines, and all of those things that we've done in the past. It also eliminates the recommendation for tests to stay after a possible exposure. We were also notified last week that we would only get one shipment of rapid tests for the year. So, I have applied for them. I will get a box of either, anywhere from 250 to 1,000 tests, and I'll know when it arrives. And that's, that's our test for the year. That's it, all I got. Make sure we're clear on that. So, changes since July, only in one month. I made a handy-dandy chart. Dr. White and I spent two hours one morning just trying to figure out the different changes because it kept changing every hour. So, there is no longer weekly testing, there is no testing if not vaccinated staff, there's no tests to stay in close contacts, we do, we no longer quarantine unmasked close contacts, we no longer do outbreak testing. All we quarantine are people who are sick. Like I said, we are currently at green. This is from that Cook County site that we do check every week. We will not notify you unless it changes colors. Again, that's the messaging. We do have masks available, we do have staff and students that choose to wear masks. Again, we encourage masks for anyone that are exposed. And if their name is a close contact, we'll encourage them to wear a mask. And again, this is, we're working with the health team on this as it changes. We are also going to ask for vaccination documentation. There are, there have been benefits related to, if you, in the past, if you have positive COVID tests, we can reimburse sick time, so we will require vaccination documentation for the new year if that benefit continues. And families can submit vaccination records for their children. It doesn't really impact your quarantine status, there's no longer quarantine.
Any questions?
I have a question, but this directed towards Dr. White. Is there any type of way when we run out of those tests that we can, as a need basis, purchase more? Is it funds for that, or can we pull from somewhere?
Mr. White, we do have funds in our ESSR budgets that are available if we are able to find those at-home tests or rapid tests for the school district. So, yes, absolutely, if we need more, we can make every effort to purchase more.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Currently, to add to Dr. Naki's report, we do have a partnership with String Labs that come to the district every Tuesday to offer testing. It had been for staff that were required because they were unvaccinated. We have been in communication with them and they will continue to come for a brief period of time until we make other decisions for any staff that would like to be tested.
So, I'll send a note, they dropped off this, like, 40 tests per building because I have no idea to gauge how much. Normally, we only test about 10 people per building for staff-wise, so I will send out that communication that'll be available Tuesday mornings. And again, we'll see how long they're willing to do it since it looks like the funding is changing. And again, we will have to adjust the tests as needed if people, if more people seem to want to test.
Thank you, Dr. Naki. Are there any additional questions? Thank you, Dr. Naki. Dr. Naki and I will be sending out an update to staff as well with the new health mitigations and to the families. Item G on the superintendent's report, Freedom of Information Act.
In the past month, we did not have any Freedom of Information Act requests.
Thank you, Mr. Ricker. That concludes the August superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. White. Some technical issues here. Next agenda item, 3A, Safety Committee Report. If I'm not mistaken, the Safety Committee met last week.
It was, um, I was the last to.
You have a report. This is all right.
Now, both of the meetings was to discuss the Threat Assessment Plan, which is in addition to the Act of Shooter Drill. Basically, the, the, everyone at the meeting kind of hammered out the details of the plan, which was sent to the board on August 12th and submitted to the
State? Regional Office of Education.
Regional Office of Education on August 19th. So, it was, it was pretty straightforward. The board didn't see, like I said, the board received a copy of it. The other thing that we discussed was that we always have the Act of Threat Drill in the first Monday of the school. The Safety Committee will meet again at 9:00 a.m. on September 7th to discuss the drill for this year. And another meeting will be scheduled with the police departments to, so we can coordinate the Act of Shooter Drill. Also, there was a brief discussion on ALICE, which is the Alert, Lockdown, alarm, counter, and evacuate. A couple of administrators, Mr. Ricker and Dr. Naki went to that training and we were discussing whether or not we want to train staff on that, but it's pretty involved, so we would look into that more so in the future. And I think that's pretty much all. Any questions?
I do, again.
Mr. White, before you begin, Mrs. McCray, I do have the plan if you wanted it to be shown. Do you have that, Mr. Tuck, I think I forwarded it to you? Just in case you wanted to just highlight and show the plan so that our school audience and community can see that. If I emailed it to you. Go ahead, Mr. White, I just wanted to mention.
First, Ms. McCray, excellent job heading the committee. I know it's a task to discuss self-sensitive issues, especially windy. In the past, we had shootings and different things happen at schools. But I do have a question. We have now a current fire alarm that I think when you pull the fire alarm, if I'm not mistaken of how fire alarms work, you pull the fire alarm and it goes to the fire department and the police department? And am I mistaken with that, is it correct?
It goes to the fire department for the fire alarm.
Okay, and then the fire department has wonderful phones and wonderful walkie-talkies and wonderful communication skills, if I can add, that goes to our police department. We do currently have Blue Solutions technology that, Blue Point, I'm sorry. Blue Point Solutions, was it Blue Solutions? Blue Point Solutions that our previous superintendent's son is the part owner of what with. I want to question is, how many times have that been used in our district? Mrs. Naki, did you suggest?
Never, our folk would never use it.
Thank God. Thank God, thank God. And how many times have the fire alarm been used? Quite a bit, if I can add. Or just incidents that the, could give us, well, it's just different, okay, it happens.
We had one last year. We had in 2019, an actual fire at the Barack Obama School. So, the fire alarm was used for that in a classroom.
And the police showed up as well.
Fire, yes, they all showed up, yes. They had a distinguished, extinguished the fire in the classroom. It was a teacher's classroom, so we did take advantage of that and we're thankful that they showed up promptly in Chicago Heights.
And a wonderful job our police and fire do here at Park Forest. I just wanted to lay a few nuggets on our minds, that's all, that's it.
Okay, on this first page, everybody read to this first page. It's, we will add a page, a statement we added to let everyone know that this is not the be-all, end-all, that all, everything is not encompassed in this one document. So, that will be added. On the next page, you can go to the next page. There are some changes made to this page. And let me say that on this entire document, it was a template that was given by Dr. Kinder and another district, and our committee pretty much collaborated to decide what works for our district. For example, this bottom, what says contact law enforcement, that was added because on the template it wasn't there. Because we do know our Park Forest liaison for the police, for, we will contact Rachel for Park Forest and for Chicago Heights, we would just call the main emergency number. We can't, oh, you can go back, I had another, a little bit. Currently, we don't document in Skyward, but moving forward, we add to document in Skyward for better communication between social workers and administrative staff. I think it's just social workers and counselors.
And counselors.
You can go forward. Scroll down a bit. We added a report of threat to harm self, of harm to self that wasn't in the original template. Um, go to the next page. We felt this page was pretty straightforward, so we stuck with that. Also, on, you can go to the next page. That page stayed the same. On this page, we discussed adding a question regarding self-harm, but I think we decided to just stick with it, adding it on that previous page. That first page said confidential. There was nothing on this page. We kept, when I say nothing, I mean we kept everything. We can move on to the threatening risk factors to consider. We kept everything on that page and a subsequent page. On this page, we discussed that the total, it was discussed that a total score doesn't necessarily determine the severity of the threat. And we needed to add that the administrators, oh, no, that the social workers and counselors would meet as a team to discuss the findings, so that number seven was added. And on this page. It just says that we will follow the crisis management plan as needed. So, that's back up at the top, you can scroll back up to the top. Where it says, where it says a sponsored medium or serious threat, sponsored high or very serious threat, those who said that we would continue to follow the crisis, the crisis management plan as needed. This last page, we changed it from specific, whether it's medium or high or high level concern to just, the principal was notified by phone or email or superintendent would be notified by phone or email, superintendent notified by phone or email. Those were different, but we decided to simplify it and tailor it to our district. And the only other, oh, we do have more. We took out where it is, let me scroll. I don't know, what page is it? Intervention and Reengagement Plan, okay, so where it says counseling, scroll down a little bit. Instead of saying counseling, probation, and caseworker is announced as counseling caseworker and SAS, which is for suicide prevention. And on the next page, we kept that the same. And it was agreed on, next page. Now, go back. We added a summary and our summary specifically says to redact the names of other students, provide a copy of the threat greeting to the family, and provide a release of information to the students here. And that was, well, on this page. Mr. Ricker added, we had a template from other schools and Mr. Ricker added others.
Mrs. McCray, this page is for us to submit to the Regional Office of Education, the members on the committee.
Other schools had a page where they determined who did what. At each building level, they had who was in what role. And we just named, Mr. Ricker was filling the person's name to say for each different school. But that's not what that is, I apologize. Those are just people who are on. And I go.
I have a question, I always have questions, don't worry. One of the, one of the templates, the little boxes, it said notify parents if necessary. So, what does that? Yeah, right, go back, it was right there. And the student's parents, intended victims' parents, if necessary. What is, I'm trying to figure out what that means, if necessary, if there's a victim involved. It's voting, okay.
For Dr. DuPey, if you notice, there are the three categories. There's a low risk, medium risk, and high risk. So, typically, if we may have a false report from someone or if a student or staff or parent or someone reports an incident, we do investigate, but if it's unfounded, if we realize that that's something that is not accurate, we do contact the parents, but we don't have to engage with them in an immediate conversation based on the level of what we will have our next steps be. So, we do always contact parents, but the low risk is different than you have a medium or a high risk, that you need to immediately go into action in terms of the next steps. But our social workers, our school principals, always, and Dr. Naki, we always give parents a phone call.
Thank you. It's kind of confusing of if necessary or if that means like if it's a general threat, that sort of thing, because it wasn't like intended victim or something like that. That's, that's what I was questioning. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I might say thank you to Mr. Ricker because Mr. Ricker is the person who actually coordinates the meetings and creates the agenda and creates the notes for the meeting, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCray, for serving as the board liaison for the Safety Committee and to Mr. Ricker for all the things that he has done to assist as well. Next agenda item, motion to, there's one question, sorry. Next agenda item, motion to approve consent agenda. We're here by group, move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda. Items dated August 23rd, 2022, dated August 22nd, 2022, as indicated, items A through B. So, move. Moving property, second question?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Council panel.
What's wrong with this?
It's the same thing that was wrong last time because I don't think we had an opportunity to discuss the charges that the attorney had accrued as far as the amount and as far as services and.
What are your questions about?
Was there a need to probably access those attorneys so many times throughout the day? Well, I should say, yeah.
Yes. We don't just call the attorney just to have a conversation with them. Probably 85%. Um probably eighty-five percent of the times we contact the attorney, it would cut the board, ask us to inquire if the attorney concerned something, either ABM or a contract or something, and if you look at that, it all, it all highlights what we talked to them about, you know, be it ABM, be it superintendent contract, whatever it is, it's all highlighted in the, uh, in the invoice study.
Okay, and then also, as far as the fees that they are assessing, what is it that we're being charged for? And as far as their retainer fees, what is included?
We pay, we pay one ninety-five an hour, one ninety an hour. Uh we paid the former law firm, I think it was three fifty an hour. And so basically, we have a savings of over a hundred and fifty-five dollars per hour that we were saving, and we're spending less time. If you've noticed that, you can go back in the past and look at some of the bills from the attorneys, they were for just, well, we have, for this attorney here, it's three months a bill. Uh we would get that from the former, former firm within a week, two weeks of bill.
Uh Mr. Ricker, can we go back and look at those? Because I would like to really look at that. I just, you know, have some concerns about what it is that we are using taxpayers' money for with these attorneys.
It should be a concern, because.
It should be a concern.
No, I'm just saying though, each line item, every bill form that you got explains what the attorney was called for, how much time we spent with them, and who the contact was, was with. And so unless you're accusing us of doing something.
No, I'm not accusing anyone of anything, I'm just concerned about the amount of monies that we have, as far as last month, it was what, seventeen thousand dollars?
That was three months.
And then.
That was three months of bill.
And then we just got another bill for what?
It went up to eighteen, because that's four months of bill, this has all been added together, those are not individual totals. Those are, that's the total amount from basically last, well, the bills start coming in April or May.
I just don't want us to have a running tab with these uh attorneys, and that's what it looks like, it's just.
We only contact the attorney when board members ask us to contact the attorney.
Was it board members?
Board members, we're asked on several occasions to contact the attorney.
I don't, I don't think I've ever uh asked you to contact Delgado.
You asked us to contact the school board attorney, which is the Delgado law firm.
I don't think so, because I think I'm not a fan of them, of them, Delgado, so I'm quite sure I didn't ask.
Ms. Jordan, when you say call the attorney, effective June thirtieth of this year, the only law firm that we approved to use for school-based business is the Delgado law firm. We allowed the Patraca firm to complete anything they had not completed in the process of their departure. Once they were done, we're moving on to the new firm.
The new firm that was picked by who?
The board.
Did the board pick the new firm?
Yes, they voted on.
I'm just, I'm just asking.
They voted on, yes.
Uh who voted yes? Do we vote on that, or are we just giving that firm? Do we have an opportunity to interview any attorneys? I just felt like we were just thrown, they were just thrown at us because of probably affiliation of people.
If it was thrown at us, we accepted what was thrown at us, and so now we're moving forward.
Now, I'm just suggesting, or maybe probably making a um maybe a recommendation to probably go out and look at a different firm, because I'm just looking at these bills and it just seems like there's something going on.
Mr. Ricker, would you send Ms. Gordon, Ms. Jordan, a copy of bills, I said Jordan, I correct?
Yeah, I, I.
A copy of the bills that we received from.
But I'm just asking the board if we could probably go out and maybe interview.
It's not a discussion item right now. We, we're on the consent agenda, are we trying to pass a consent agenda?
But, and it's a question, right, and I'm allowed to ask that question?
Your question was answered though. And I don't know how more satisfactory to be answered, but we banned the attorney for services rendered. The attorney submitted a bill, said this is what they charging us for what we asked them to do. They're just not making up stuff they're doing. If you read each document, it says contacted by Mr. Ricker, contacted by uh Dr. White, met, met with Mr. Dr. White, President Mosby, Mr. Ricker. Uh met, was at a board meeting, attended a board meeting, we had attorney here one night, five hours at a board meeting. You think they sit, you think they, you think they sitting there for free?
I, I understand that, but I'm just concerned because every time the firm comes, there's a different attorney, a different person, I should say. And why is that?
Uh currently, Ms. Janota, who is actually our contact person, is not doing in-person meetings. So when we want an in-person attorney, she sends one of the associates who actually is working on the project hand-in-hand with her, so they know exactly what's going on. We've only got two of the guys here besides Kim, we've got Kim on Zoom normally, because she's not doing in-person meetings. We had Mr. Wong and, fill the gentleman's name. Oh, is that, yeah. Now, in, in the past, as you can remember, when we had the Patraca firms, uh Kim used to come, he had a, he had an attorney named Kim, she would come sometimes, uh another attorney would come sometimes. Uh we've had several people who came to represent, at that time, Scariola Patraca firm, and then even Mr. Patraca there, uh Scariola was dead, we had other people came representing him. They were law firms, so they have more lawyers in their education department, they can deal with education law just as well as our, I mean, our original contact person.
Well, of course, you know, I'm gonna get my two senseings as well, too. Since we're only, um, Ms. Jordan, I appreciate your due diligence, and um I think you're absolutely right, we need to be uh mindful of everything that we're spending, and my statement has nothing to do with uh your comment, because I agree, we, we need to look at everything. But when we're looking into it, uh that's seventeen thousand dollars. I've spoken, and I, I, I look here, I've said on several different occasions, um we squat the net um instead of getting the big lizard or dragon that's um right in our face. I just made a statement about um, um current superintendent relatives that we're talking about tax dollars that continue to get contracts, and former, I'm sorry, former superintendent, that we don't never bring up. I'm baffled, I'm lost, I'm talking seventeen thousand versus hundreds of thousands. We're talking about an entity that owes our babies four hundred and fifty thousand, and we do coverages on things, I, I'm, I am baffled, and it's really a shame that we, we're focusing on, not saying that we shouldn't, we should, but the same diligence that we give to that, it should be to this. And I believe it's not because it's Mr. White, it's Randall, that people have issues with, not my works, not the, the, the common sense of what I'm bringing out. Four hundred and fifty thousand, last superintendent, some multiple contracts that steal taxpayers' dollars that we refuse, that I keep screaming to bring up. We can roll eyes and get, it, it, because you're right, I should, we should be, because that is ridiculous. Seventeen thousand, five hundred thousand on this, two hundred thousand on that, thirty thousand on this, that he continue to get contracts that we've all said we don't understand how or why. That I just said, one of the particular items that is still a monthly recurring bill, we haven't used not one time, not once. So my two senses is that we got hundreds of thousands over here, and we got a few thousand over here. Not neglecting what you're saying, Ms. Jordan, because I agree, we should be diligent about everything, but let's stop being so biased, stop just jumping on the issues that we want, because we have people that don't like certain people, and let's get on the whole path. That's all I want to say.
But I think the thing that we are voting on right now are.
Agree, I agree, and you brought up the, the lawyers.
And that's on that, right?
Yeah, no, not the vote for the lawyers, you brought up about um getting new lawyers.
Well, no, 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 I did bring that up, but as far as accounts payable to that firm.
Correct, and I'm for what you're saying, I agree with you saying. Only reason I dumped that is because that amount is pennies to where our tax dollars amount is going through. And so I just want to continue to keep, every chance I get to keep saying, let's think about the whole. Yeah, we, let's focus on that, and let's focus on this, but let's continue to think about the whole, that we're dropping the ball, y'all, in a lot of different areas.
So can you remind me, and bring me to the board?
I've, I've.
I mean, like, in accounts payable, say, hey, look, this is, is that, uh, is that the appropriate time?
Yes, ma'am, I'm gonna make sure I do that, but I've done it, you know, I've called and stuff, but I'm gonna make sure that it's done that way.
And that's why I brought that out, because that was something that was standing out, and I highlighted it, because I think that's something that we should be addressing. I understand that they are, you know, term, quote unquote, that the board picked, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, we know.
As, as the kids will say, take your L and keep on moving.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it, I mean, you, you, you go, it's, it's, it's personal, it's personal to you, it seem like, I mean, it doesn't seem like it's professional. Because, no, 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 listen, because you were the board president for two years, and the Patraca Scariola firm made over two hundred thousand dollars a year on this district. Easily, easily, and you've never mentioned about how much we pay attorney. We got a law firm, and we're paying a hundred and fifty dollars, a hundred and fifty-five dollars, less than we were paying the firm, former firm, and getting the same results, and we're complaining about it, I don't understand, we, we, we're getting a savings, and then you want to squawk about it, because you feel that Mr. Mosby has some personal relationship with the Delgado law firm.
You're right.
Well, you said it, but just in case you want to, I don't have a personal relationship with the Delgado law firm. Okay? I was looking to bring a law firm in that was much cheaper than the one we were paying, and to get the same results. And as the board president, I thought that was my responsibility to try to save this district money instead of spending money for more money and getting the same results we can get for less.
But I think that's all of our jobs, as board members, we work.
Apparently, you don't appreciate it, because you're howling about the, how much we paying them, and we pay, we pay, we pay.
We should be governing everything that we do, am I correct? And it's not a I, it's the board, it's seven board members, am I correct?
That's, I, I'm calling for consent vote, I, I don't have seven votes, I got one on this item.
Exactly, and one vote, and, and one voice, am I correct?
Yes, one voice, but I speak for all of us, you know that, right?
No, you don't.
Yeah, you do. President Mosby.
I mean, as the board president during the meeting, most definitely, but I speak.
Anywhere I go, when I'm the board president, based on what this board has, directive they have given me, I speak on this board. Be in a board meeting, be in the community meeting, be in the hallway, that basically, I speak on the directive that this board has given me. I don't run out and just do Mr. Mosby's thing as a board president, okay? I do what I do, do the best for this school district, for this board, try to move in a positive direction, try to find ways to save us money, get the same results. And that's it, I get nothing from the Delgado law group, they're not my friends, I'm not invited to their house for dinner. Matter of fact, I don't even know where they live at. Now, if you want to talk about someone who I have a personal relationship with, who'll be our hearing officer, Judge Studd, because I worked in his courtroom for twenty-five years. Now, so if you have a problem with what he's doing, and charging us for hearings, you can say, oh, this is Mr. Mosby's boy, now let's talk about it, that's my boy, I'll claim him. But the Delgado law group, I met them through someone else. Okay?
President Mosby?
Yes.
Okay, so, five years later, I'm over here, based on what uh Mrs. Jordan is saying, um after our last board meeting, we excluded um and didn't vote on the accounts payable for section uh because we had questions, because numbers weren't adding up. We have not had an opportunity to come back as a board to discuss with this new information that we've gotten, uh the new, uh what are these things, the new invoices from Delgado group before, oh, before, before we are being asked to approve paying it. And, and that's the concern that I'm hearing from Mrs. Jordan, so um.
You wouldn't pay attention. You wouldn't pay attention.
No, 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 I, I, I'm, I'm looking at the consent agenda.
Ms. Jordan said that I'm going to pick the law firm, and I'm, something funny going on here, that's what Ms. Jordan said.
I didn't say there's something funny going on, but you, you did personally, pick that firm up.
You got the recording going?
I am looking at accounts payable, I am addressing the part of accounts payable
Right.
that Mrs. Jordan brought up, which was the attorney fees, which I'm assuming what the intention is, is to pull that out so we can discuss it in closed session.
You haven't had that.
Come back and, and vote on part B again.
No, we, we did that, and we sent it to you guys in advance, so if you had any questions, you would call and ask your questions in advance.
Can we discuss that in closed session now?
But here's, no.
There's a difference between we're all here together and can talk together versus, okay, I gotta call Mrs. McCray, okay, I gotta call Mr. Mosby, I gotta call Ms. Howard, you know, we can't do, we can't talk all together.
And ask her about, you know, the questions, you don't have to call five different people, Dr. White, this is what, this is my simple call, Mr. Ricker, this is Mr. Ricker sent out, Mr. Mosby didn't send it out.
So.
Okay, and so when you ask for information, you got the information at the last board meeting. Everybody, Mr. Ricker went and ran copies, came and gave it back to everybody.
But we were both on it.
Excuse me, you had, excuse me, I'm talking now, you had that information for an entire month. And if you did not do your due diligence, you want to sit here and talk tonight for five hours with something that you could have went over a page, a half a page a day, and had all your questions answered by, right, by today, instead of coming here and been debating something for twenty-five minutes or an hour about something that's extremely simple, because basically, if you read the invoice, it tells everything they did when they, when they, what they charged them for, how much time it took, what the rate is, who they talked to, what the conversation was about. So what's so hard to comprehend that?
So what's the problem with us sitting here together as a board and discussing what we're seeing and bringing the concerns to each other? Because perhaps Mr. White has seen something that I ain't caught on to.
Dr. DuPey, you're trying, you're trying, you're trying to help this out, and you're kind of making it worse.
How am I making it worse, by saying, I was like, you know, I don't see a problem with the whole words of the whole discussing.
Like, when you have questions, you call me, Mr. Mosby, I got a question. Don't you do that?
Yes, I do.
You got a question about something, Mr. Mosby, I got a question about this, I got a question about this, I got a question about this. Ms. Jordan comes in and says, it's not just a question about the bill, she want to question, in fact, I got a personal relationship, I hired attorneys by myself, they making too much money, and, and basically, you know, it is kind of ludicrous, the stuff that board members come in and say in the middle of a meeting when you had stuff so long. You could have had every question answered, every question, you had line by line, you, you, it did not sneak up on you, you'd had it for a month, then you had the other documents for a week, and no questions.
We didn't get it answered, we did not, we were given that.
This is black and white, what, what you, what you, what you want, Dr., Dr., what you want Mr. Ricker to say? Well, yeah, they came, we talked to them, this is what, this is what they built us.
Did you get that answer? Did you, I'm just asking you, and then each board member.
I don't remember.
We didn't, we didn't, no, we didn't.
You got the document to go over, that was, that was the answer right there, no, what I'm just saying.
I read between my.
The documents, the documents speak for themselves, there's nothing else, Dr. White, David, or I can tell you about the invoices that you have, because we got the same information you got, this is the hours they spent, this is what they did, this is what they billed us for, it's black and white. And then, but to come here and, you know, I'm offended, I'm offended that you come here and say something's funny going on. Like, I'm telling them, hey, bill the district this month, man, bill the district.
That's not what I'm saying.
That's what, that's what you implied, though.
No, it's not Mr. Mosby.
If you heard us say that something's funny going on, raise your hand, you ain't got to say this.
With this firm and the amount that they're charging us.
You said something.
On accounts payable, yes.
But you never.
I mentioned that last time, but we didn't get that answer.
We had a law firm that charges three hundred and fifty dollars an hour, you've never one time in your ten years being a board, asked a question about a bill.
Delgado right now.
What?
President Mosby, I hear you, I hear what you're saying, and I get that you're, I, I, I'm understanding that you are feeling like you're being attacked.
Oh, no, no.
That, that's kind of what it seems to me.
No, I just, I just see, I see the lunacy in what's going on here, and I can't believe it, that's my problem. That's my problem, you know, I think, I think everyone, I think everyone on this board is intelligent enough to be able to read some bills and understand what they're saying and come to a conclusion. And Ms. Jordan's conclusion is something's wrong going on, we paying them too much, and we paying them almost half, or we paying the other law firm, which billed us for all kind of stuff.
Well, you know how I feel about that law firm, but what I'm saying is, we can bill, we look at and say, hey, something doesn't seem right. Why is it that you don't want us to discuss this together, when we're at the board meeting, when we are able to be together and all speak at once?
At.
Everybody hears the same thing, we're done. Everybody hears the same thing, we're done. So in that case...
What's your question?
Well, we don't have to discuss in a closed session because the, the items, I can't go through and say, hey, why do you X, Y, Z for X, Y, Z in front of everybody else? That's closed session. That's privileged information. So if we left closed session last, last board meeting, questioning these, uh, these fees because they didn't add up. And so now we got more information. Can we go back, take this section out, accounts payable, discuss lawyer fees in closed session, find out, okay, are we all okay with it? Go on from there, vote, vote on it afterwards. And that seems to be the only, only concern because that is something that was left over that wasn't, and I know you're laughing because you're saying, and I see what you're, I understand. Ms. Jordan has other concerns outside of this bill on the accounts payable right here. There are other concerns about the law firm. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about just, this is a bill, can we discuss this bill? And can we focus just on discussing this bill? That seems to be what, what she wants to do. I'm all for it because I would love to discuss it too and, and just get it all over.
Can I get a motion in a second?
We make the questions there.
I have a question. Are we removing item B from the, excuse this agenda to discuss after the, uh, after closed session?
Is that yes or no? What we have to do, uh, we send the, we send the motion and propose a different motion?
Sorry, motion accepted. Sorry, a little second more.
I've heard them so much.
Moving properly second.
Because there've been times where, okay, I received my motion.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Hawthorne? Dr. Dupay?
Anytime I'm not able to discuss something, I consider it going to my answer is always going to be no.
Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
No.
Mr. Mosby?
Yes, motion carries four, two, one. Next agenda item. Next agenda, motion to adopt twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three district goals.
Two no's.
Yeah, what is the motion?
Uh-oh.
Next agenda, motion to approve the Board of Education, motion, motion, motion move, hereby moved that Board of Education adopt the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two district goals that discussed at the regular session on July twenty-six, twenty twenty-two and is as recommended by the superintendent.
So move. Second.
Question. Madam Secretary Roca.
Ms. Hawthorne? Dr. Dupay?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan? Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Mosby?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Next agenda, item, motion to approve retired teachers slash consultant agreement. You have, I move Board of Education approve retired teachers slash consultants agreement for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year for the following retired teachers and, and consultant as recommended by the superintendent. Paul Bragwell, Bartwell, excuse me, uh, resource teacher, Joan Kocar, Cruz, Cruzer, excuse me, uh, social worker consultant, Pamela Jones, kindergarten teacher, Dr. Carolyn Trod, educational consultant.
So move.
Second. Question. Madam Secretary Roca.
Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Dr. Dupay?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Mosby?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Next agenda, item, motion to display tentative twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three district budget. You hereby move the Board of Education direct the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three tentative, tentative district budget to be put on display for thirty days prior to the regular session on September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two, as recommended by the superintendent.
So move.
Second. Moving properly. Second question. Madam Secretary Roca.
I didn't hear the motion.
Ms. McCray. So. Ms. McCray.
Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Dr. Dupay?
Yes.
Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Mosby?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Next agenda, item, motion to approve retroactively, motion to retroactively approve transportation contract. You hereby move that Board of Education retroactively approve the contract between Park Four Chicago, Exclusives One Sixty-three and Starfish Transportation for General Education Student Transportation for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year effective August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two with a one-way route cost of three hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents, as discussed at the Finance Committee meeting on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two and is recommended by the superintendent. So move. Hold on. Yeah. Hold on a second. An emergency exemption to the public bidding process exists for the purpose due, uh, to several factors. One, current divided conduct service contract is written. Two, the impact on staff, students, and parents from late, late second wave buses. Three, a nationwide bus shortage. Four, time to, the time to go through the public bid process. And three, I mean, the five twelve bus companies were contacted and Starfish Transportation is the only company able to provide service. So move.
Second.
Moving about the second question. Madam Secretary Roca.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Dr. Dupay?
Yes.
Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes.
Mr. Mosby?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Next agenda, item, motion to retroactively approve the National School Lunch Program Emergency Contract. You hereby move the Board of Education retroactively approve the National School Lunch Program Emergency Contract with just the Dash Group Service Group for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year with per meal price at a dollar and seventy-four cent for breakfast, three dollars and five cent for lunch, and ninety cent for snacks, as discussed at the Finance Committee on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, and August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, and is recommended by the superintendent. Second. Moving properly. Second, you get all that, Ms. Jordan? Question. Madam Secretary Roca.
Dr. Dupay?
Yes.
Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Mosby?
Yes, motion carries second, seven zero. Next agenda, item, old business, we have nothing listed. I have eight new business, nothing listed.
Wait a minute, can we go back to old business?
What old business we got?
Uh, the ABM, what, have we, ABM?
ABM, um...
That's old business, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, actually, we can talk about that in closed session. Okay. Is it okay? Can I give motion going closed session? So move.
Second.
Question. Madam Secretary.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Dr. Dupay?
Yes.
Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Mosby?
Yes.